We will now call to order the Monday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five deliberative meeting. Mr. Solicitor.
Good afternoon, Deputy Mayor, members of council, members of the public and administration. Welcome to the Monday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five deliberative meeting for the City of Chester. Following ordinances are on the agenda. Bill five, first reading of Bill number five, mending part thirteen, planning and zoning, to revise subsection thirteen, twenty-seven point oh one, B, entitled Commercial Uses of Article one three two seven, entitled Allowed Uses in Primarily Non-Residential Zoning Districts to Prohibit a Construction Company or Tradesperson's Headquarters in the C dash one R, C dash two R, and CBD and W dash one zoning districts to establish a maximum percentage of lot for outdoor storage in the light industrial commercial LIC zoning district and define construction company or tradesperson's headquarters in subsection one three six five point oh two. Bill six, first reading of Bill number six, providing for the opening of Ulrich Street, a vacated street situated generally between the southerly side of West Second Street and the northerly side of West Front Street. In addition to the aforementioned ordinances, the following resolutions will be before council for final passage. Resolution one two two, authorize approval for the installation of a handicap parking zone in the two hundred block of Brumwell Street, in the eight hundred block of West Eighth Street, in the one hundred block of East Twenty-first Street, in the eleven hundred block of Butler Street, in the three hundred block of East Twentieth Street, and in the one hundred block of Thurlow Street in the City of Chester. Resolution one twenty-three, authorize approval for the appointment of an interim open records officer. Resolution one twenty-four, authorize approval for testing to be given by the Civil Service Board to all eligible candidates for the position of battalion chief in the Chester Fire Department. Resolution one twenty-five, authorize approval to enter into a license agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the installation, access, maintenance, operation, and removal of an air monitoring station at the Boys and Girls Club. Resolution one twenty-six, authorize approval for the preparation of a request for proposals for professional engineering consulting services. Resolution one twenty-seven, authorize approval of the ratification of the submission of a statewide local share assessment grant to be used for the upgrade of damaged and inoperable vehicles in various departments. Resolution one twenty-eight, authorize approval of the ratification of the engagement of MG Engineering Associates LLC to provide environmental consulting and field oversight services. Resolution one twenty-nine, authorize approval of change order number two, R C O R dash zero 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 two, end parentheses, in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars, increasing the contract value between the City of Chester and Davis Construction to four million nine hundred and eighteen thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars. Resolution one thirty, authorize approval of security release number two for the fourth and booth distribution center land development, phase two, in the amount of two hundred and fifty-four thousand eighty-three dollars and eighty cents, leaving a balance of twenty-three thousand seven hundred and forty dollars to be retained as maintenance security through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven. Resolution one thirty-one, authorize approval of the amendment of F Y two thousand and twenty-one action plan for the Hope dash A R P fund and approve the allocation of Home dash A R P funds not to exceed six hundred and sixty thousand eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars to Everest Pace Center, Inc., for phase one of the Silvercare Senior Housing Development Project. Resolution one thirty-two, authorize approval of the submission of a Pico Green Region Open Space Program Grant for the Crozier Park Trail Reforestation Project. Resolution one thirty-three, authorize approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Chester, Delaware County District Attorney's Office, and the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society for the Stabilization and Maintenance of Vacant Lots owned by the City of Chester and the Chester Redevelopment Authority. Resolution one thirty-four, authorize approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Chester, Delaware County District Attorney's Office, and the Chester Police Department for the Chester Partners for Safe Neighborhoods Initiative. Resolution one thirty-five, authorize approval of a memorandum of understanding between the City of Chester and the City of Salto del Guayara, Paraguay, to establish a sister-city relationship. Resolution one thirty-six, authorize approval for the ratification of an agreement with David Blackmore and Associates, E B A, Inc., for the required professional services to support the construction of the city's Public Works Building that costs not to exceed twenty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-four cents. And that would conclude today's list. I'm not certain if there's an executive session or not.
Yeah, would you like to take your seat back and want me to continue? Okay. All right. Um, there are a lot of resolutions here. I would like to request an executive session after this meeting so that we can go through the multitude of, you know, resolutions and ordinances and what have you. And at that time, I think we'd like to have our Chief of Staff join us and our Solicitor, you know, in the executive session. Are there any questions from members of council or you want to wait for the executive session?
Well, no, I have a question would be five. Could it be explained, uh, the non-residential zoning districts and what the C one R is, the C two R, the CBD, and the W I zoning districts? Can they be explained so that we all can have a bit of clarity as to what they are or what it stands for?
Sure. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So those districts are essentially our mixed-use districts. So CBD is our central business district. That's right out the door here. Our C one and C two R districts are really our mixed-use districts where we encourage a mix of commercial and residential.
The W one, of course, is our waterfront district around the stadium.
The stadium area, which is really west of the Commodore Berry Bridge over to the Wharf Building, essentially. It's our, it's our district where we really are encouraging mixed use and not industrial uses like these tradesmen headquarters are turning out to be.
So it's mixed use, and what is the W standing for?
W one is for our waterfront district. So we're with this ordinance prohibiting tradesmen headquarters, like we talked about previously in previous meetings, in these mixed-use districts because they're mostly turning out to be industrial-type developments with pole barns, parking lots, malt storage, outdoor storage. They really just do not support our mixed-use vision for the city, which is, again, housing and more retail-oriented, commercial.
Thank you.
Okay.
And how will that fit in with the industry that's already there?
It's actually more appropriate for these tradesmen headquarters, in my opinion.
In these, you know, existing LIC, MIC, HIC.
Or our industrial districts, because that's really what they're turning out to be is an industrial use. It's mostly outdoor storage. Is that working? They're really outdoor storage and industrial-type buildings that are being as a result of these categories, being of a construction, tradesmen headquarters. Does that make sense? Okay.
Anyone else have any questions?
Yes, R one twenty-five. Where it talks about the air monitoring, monitoring stations at the Boys and Girls Club, is there a term that this system will be in place?
I don't, you know, I don't think there is. I think it's at our discretion.
So it can be anywhere from three months, six months, twelve months, eighteen?
Eighteen, eighteen months.
Eighteen months.
Anyone else?
I do have a few.
Yes, R one twenty-six. Clear.
Go ahead, Councilman.
Asking for further explanation on R one twenty-six. I know it's very clear as far as what I'm reading, but I just like a little bit more in-depth information on why we're doing it and what, how the process is going to look.
Certainly, Councilman. We're looking, we're looking to get council authorization to move forward and request our proposals for an alternate engineer. We have an existing engineer at the present time. There are times and there are occasions when there may be conflict, the city does not have an alternate engineer at the present time. So for example, the Public Works Building, a building, for example, there may be occasions where the designer of that, which are architect engineers, somebody else might need to review certain elements of the plan and interpretation. So this will give us the opportunity to move forward with selecting another alternate engineer, so that we have a hope. If they can use them for various purposes.
Gotcha, okay. And I understand that. A follow-up question that I'm having right now that I think somebody in the community might have is, can the City of Chester afford to hire another subsidiary or another company?
These will not be on retainer. All our professional service agreements are basically on an hourly basis, so if you don't use them, you don't pay anything for them.
And we use them a lot, we pay a lot.
If you have construction projects like the Public Works Building, yes, you're using them a lot and have for the last year in the design and the architectural renderings and everything. It is a, it is a costly endeavor.
Gotcha.
Are we looking for just one?
Uh, yes.
Yes, so the other question I have is about R one thirty-three, uh, for the maintenance of vacant lots owned by the City of Chester and the Redevelopment Authority. Um, will this cost us any money? Um, and if so, how much? And I know we're talking about the maintenance of vacant lots, and so over the past couple of months, I've been looking at the beautification programs from PENDOT and other entities. Could we, for the, for the lots that are owned by us, could we go into a beautification program without having to incur any expenses on, on the city?
So this particular project is being funded by the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office, so they are putting in the funding to pay for P H S to come out, assess the lot, grade it, put grass on it, plant trees, and put a split rail fence. I believe the first amount is a hundred thousand square feet that we're limited to. If they raise additional funding, then they could expand the number of square feet. We could, in theory, include PENDOT parcels, but it could take years for PENDOT to approve us to do so. So I think we wanted to go with the low lying, visible fruit in this case, which would be vacant properties, and then some of those properties wouldn't have to be cared for by the Public Works Department. In fact, they could be cared for by P H S, which would free them up to do other work. So I think there's all-around benefits to the residents and to the city's financing, and of course selfishly to the Chester Redevelopment Authority who owns these parcels as well. So as parcels get redeveloped too, we can take them offline and hopefully substitute out other ones as well in the future.
And here it says, um, we'll be looking for the stabilization and maintenance of the vacant lots. Who will be hired or who would take care of those vacant lots?
They will hire, so they run this program in Philadelphia. It's called Philadelphia Land Care, and they do actually hire local contractors. I think they're open to working with us if we can find local folks that have those kinds of businesses and have the appropriate experience and the appropriate equipment to be considered for doing the maintenance aspect, but that's a long-term piece. If you don't maintain it, you might as well not put all the investment in to begin with. So that needs to be done over time.
And they're willing to do that for us?
They're getting paid to do it, so they're getting a grant. DA's office is putting a grant funding in, and it's really a violence, you know, reduction program because that blight has an impact on violence as well. So I think there's some benefits, because I love the benefits of greening. Trees are good. Don't say anything, Councilwoman.
Trees.
How, how much is the fund? How much is the grant for?
Do you remember the amount of the grant, Justin?
Uh, I believe the initial amount was two hundred thousand, so the DA's office had two hundred thousand dollars to put towards this, and they are looking to increase that funding to three or three hundred fifty thousand to increase the square footage, but they decided to just move forward with the two hundred that they have and hoping that they'll get more funding to increase square footage.
And this is going to be a tremendous help to us here in the city because we've been plagued with those vacant lots, absentee owners who are not taking care of the lots, and we have our constituency complaining, you know, profusively about the vacant lots. So now help is on the way, so I'm really appreciative of that.
Yeah, it's a good program.
I've got a, you said the Philadelphia DA.
No, Delaware County DA.
You said Philadelphia.
It's a Philadelphia land care program.
Okay.
It's a model that they've used in Philadelphia, yeah, that they're adopting that we're going to have used here. I don't think they've used it in any other community, but no, it's our local Delaware County DA's office that's funding it.
And a hundred thousand square feet equates to about fifty lots, give or take, you know, the size. So what we're looking to do is infill in those rows where a house is missing or two. Perfect location for these type of pocket parks, as we used to call them. Good example would be the Little West Park on Sixth Street near Tillman, where we redid that one last year. It's a perfect example. So the whole initiative is to get residents all across the city within a five-mile walk of green space, good green space. This is a excellent, excellent opportunity to get that done at no expense or very little expense to us.
I'm sure the Public Works guys that are happy, will be happy.
They look like they're happy. Parks Department.
Um, while you're still there.
Yes, yes.
Uh, one thirty-two, um, in reference to Crozier Park. Um, I just, I got a complaint last week about the dirt bikes going through the trail up there, and I believe they've damaged it three times and they had to come and redo it. So is there anything that, um, you guys are going to put in place to try to prevent that or any, I'm not sure what can be done?
Well, and that might be better answered by the Parks Department, but I know we will be putting up bollards. I know there are signs indicating that you can't put, bring ATVs back there. Uh, I think the question is, you know, enforcement. We really need to make sure some enforcement occurs because I was just talking to someone who was up there last weekend, and they said the same thing, another, one of those ATVs came down off the hill. So it could be dangerous to have people doing that when you're on the trail.
Right.
So I think we need to have, I mean, more enforcement, but I don't want to talk on behalf of the Parks Department.
Enforcement is going to be the key part to that.
And this reforestation is basically down the hill where the pool used to be, right?
It's where the pool would be. Ideally, we would put like almost sixty trees in there. At the moment, we just put an application in for thirty trees, and it would be money from Pico Green Region matched with some funding that we have through the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Mr. Alexander, did you have anything to say?
So who are we looking to, uh, for the enforcement piece?
The police.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, people say, oh, that we've been told we're allowed to be back here. Now, whether that's true or not, I don't know, but that's what they're saying. And maybe over the years, they were allowed to be back there, but now that we have an active trail system, it's a conflict with pedestrians.
Is there something we can put to, to block the bikes from getting through, or would that not be ideal?
They can find a way. I mean, they, the problem is they bring in big trailers, right? They do bring in huge trailers, and they've got, I don't know, several people with ATVs, and then they, they go around wherever the gate is, they go up and down the hill.
Because there's a road that goes up the side of the park, and then there's another little area road that goes up to the development, you know?
Right, right, to Crozier Hills, right.
So they can get trucks back there.
So we'll look into that. We'll talk to the engineer about putting more bollards up and physical, but they are pretty good at finding ways around some of these things. So I think enforcement, so people start to know that they're not allowed to do that anymore.
And they're there on the weekends.
They're there on the weekends, and a lot of the trailers have Jersey plates on them. I mean, they're not all from New Jersey, obviously, but they come from other areas.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Thank you. Anyone else from council?
Yes, R one thirty-five, um, the MOU between the City of Chester and, help me with this Salto.
One thirty-five.
Del Guayro, Paraguay. What is, what is that relationship looking like? Um, what does that agreement consist of so that our constituents can have a clear understanding as what's taking place?
Our constituents are certainly invited to attend the MOU signing on Saturday, November fifteenth at twelve o'clock in this room. It's a very basic agreement between two cities, one here in the United States being us and one in Paraguay, being the one that I can't pronounce. But they visited here in anticipation of a November fifteenth, Paraguay versus U S Men's, help me, Tom.
U S Men's National Team.
U S Men's National Team Soccer Match. Councilman Green made the first contact with them. They came up. We discussed a really basic MOU to exchange ideas, culture, manufacturing, but very basic MOU, very boilerplate, but it's just a relationship-building, uh, agreement between two cities from two different countries.
And what time is that?
Twelve noon, right here, Saturday morning, Saturday afternoon, November fifteenth.
I need a one y'all to pronounce it for me, like here, right?
Paraguay.
Who speaks Spanish in the room?
Un poquito.
Well, there's somebody in the house who could help us.
Mr. Mayor, I, I do believe that the signing's going to be at eleven AM, and then there's another event that's at twelve-thirty.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know it's been a moving target, but, okay, eleven, eleven AM signing, and they're going to remain in this room at twelve-thirty for a Paraguay presentation to their own constituents who live in the area regarding a housing program that they want them to be aware of. Then there's the game, and following the game, why don't you share what's going on in the evening?
Oh, then in the evening, they're having like an after-party slash networking event at Dream Terminal with a bunch of food and a bunch of the delegation from Paraguay. The President of the Senate will be there, um, the House, I mean, it's like, they have like five different dignitaries that will be there, including the Ambassador. And so, and it's, it's open to the public there. It's a ticketed event, though, and so they do have tickets for that event, and that'd be that night, I think from eight to twelve or something like that, or right after the game up until, until, at Dream Terminal, so. And everybody's invited, and they, they're hoping that some of the Chester community will come out and interact with the Paraguay community.
How will they get the ticket?
Uh, there is a link. I, I can send it out.
Have we posted that, Justin? We posted it somewhere, right?
Uh, I have to ask.
No? No.
They did access the poster. They sent us, uh, yep, information, so we can post it.
Tickets are fifty dollars and buy one, get one free, so you can, if you're bringing a plus one, the total would also be fifty dollars.
Are there any comments or questions from the directors? Any presentations? Our controller, Joy Taylor.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Um, I just had a couple of questions in regards to R one twenty-six, one twenty-eight, one twenty-nine, and R one thirty-six. I'm going to start with one twenty-nine. What is the nature of the change order requiring the increase?
The, the original bid specs for the construction of the Public Works Building had a reference to a construction trailer that was to be provided, but it was not paid for by the G C. It's actually the construction manager is, will be sharing this construction trailer. So there would have been two trailers on the site. Uh, instead of bringing two trailers on, what we decided to do was combine into a larger trailer, and that's what the change order is for. We, we are required to provide, per the contract specs on the construction management, a construction trailer for the construction manager.
Okay, so this second change order is in regards to a construction, a construction trailer?
That's correct.
What was the first one?
The first one was for the removal of some spoiled soil and the removal of the underground storage tanks.
Contaminants.
Correct.
Okay. That leads me to R one twenty-eight, where it says approval to ratify the engineering, the, excuse me, the engagement of MG Engineering Associates to provide environmental consulting. So did we already have them, and what is the ratification? How is the ratification addressing the first change order and any future change orders? Because I don't, what I'm, what I'm seeing is a lot of engagement with additional consultants regarding that project, when we just ratified the engineering contract, which addressed not only that project, but a ton of other city projects, bringing that contract up significantly higher than what it originally was, and it's looking, it's giving the potential that there's some overlap of services, and I want to make sure that we're getting adequate services for all the contracts that we are engaging in with the various vendors.
The, the first change order for the removal, which was a change order for the, for the general contractor, that was for the removal of the manganese, roughly, I think, two hundred and seventy-five cubic yards, and also the removal of a couple of underground storage tanks.
Okay.
That wasn't, that wasn't identified when the bid specs were put together, so this, this was work that was not previously identified. Then it was identified. Now you need somebody to run the oversight of that particular program. We got a couple of different proposals that came in. Uh, we had our existing engineer that provided a quote.
That's Colliers.
That's Colliers, correct.
Okay.
I got another quote from MG Engineering, which was less than the original quote from our engineer, so we moved forward with MG, we're looking to move forward with MG Engineering to provide the oversight specific to that change order, not on the overall project.
Specific to the number one contaminant.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so Colliers identified the contaminants, but they weren't capable of continuing that, or it was your decision to go with a lesser, um, contract or the cost, in terms of cost, to go with someone who looks more affordable to continue to maintain addressing any future contaminants?
I, I, it's.
I'm just trying to make sure that I'm processing correctly.
Colliers would be more than capable, but at this particular point with the, I, I shared the same concerns that you do with the cost, so when they gave me a proposal for that, I looked at another proposal, which was significantly less.
And that's the MG Engineering?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the, the need for the ratification?
Correct.
Because you already engaged them. Okay.
We needed that work done before this council meeting.
Do we have any results of these various tests that are done? Because I know that that area and some other areas along that entire corridor have been exposed to a variety of different things, especially considering the Wade Dump Site, right? So I want to make sure that while we're doing the testing, that we're not coming up with a third change order of something that we could have potentially addressed at request number one. Just trying to get the best bang for our buck.
I, I totally agree. I, I can assure you that unfortunately, this will probably not be the last change order. There will be additional change orders. This, we're not building a Public Works Building on farmland.
No, I understand.
There's, there's going to be concrete debris that's under there. We're not going to know exactly what is there until they start digging, which is what they're working on now. working on now. We did some test samples on the site, adjacent to the site. That's where they found elevated levels of manganese, which needed to be removed, just in one spot, actually.
Cool beans. So MGM, excuse me, MG Engineering will be the environmental experts moving forward for all future testing that needs to take place in regards to that project?
Specific to change order one.
Oh, to change, wait, so then that means?
This is, this is specific to change order one, for the removal of the manganese and the underground storage tanks, because then you have to do testing that's related to that as well. You have to do additional soil samples underneath the tanks.
But they're going to be the engineering firm to continue to do the testing? Or will you have to engage someone else?
This cost that's in here is specific for change order one. If there's additional testing that needs to be done, we're going to do the same thing. We're going to identify somebody who can give us a good cost estimate to do those tests.
So you may not use them for any future testing?
If future testing isn't necessary, we won't be using anybody for future testing.
Okay, so there's the potential that we could be looking at having to have someone else come and do environmental testing at some point?
It's a possibility.
Okay, all right. Just making mental notes, so that if it comes up again, I'm connecting the dots. So that addresses 128 and 129 for me. 126, however, just, I know Councilman asked about that as well, but again, looking at the last addendum to Colliers Engineering's agreement, which was ratified in, what, July of '26? July of '26, July 26th of '24. We still have, that was extended for three years, so we still have some time on them. Do we know where we stand with all the deliverables that they were supposed to be able to provide for us before we go engage another engineering consulting firm? Because that's a part of some of the work that they're supposed to be able to provide for us.
Colliers will still be involved with, because they were the architect slash engineer that developed the bid specs for the Public Works Building, so they'll need to be involved in this project, which probably will take us to the end of next year. Their involvement will be in reviewing submittals, because they prepared the bid specs, so the submittals need to go to them. They'll be reviewing any questions that come up with, from any of the four prime contractors that we have, when it comes to interpreting the bid specs, if there's some gray area they don't understand. Colliers who drew that up, so they'll need to answer those questions. And they'll also, as required, they're going to be signing off on any payment certificates, because under the AIA forms that we're using, it's the engineer who, engineer slash architect who signs off on those submittals.
Understanding that, can you explain how that ties into 136? Because David Beckmore and Associates are going to be providing some professional services to support the construction as well, but it sounds like a lot of what, it sounds like Colliers is also going to be carrying a lot of weight while we're simultaneously looking for another consulting firm for engineering? Just trying to connect all the dots, especially because of the expenses.
Yeah, as you can tell, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of people involved in a project of this scale.
I totally understand. This is the largest undertaking that the city has done in quite some time.
It's a large project, yeah. 136 is actually, and there's an attachment with the resolution, which we'd be happily able to provide. If you look at the last two pages of that form, Council?
Yeah, I don't have that, so.
That lists the various potential inspections that are required and testing that's required. For example, they'll test the quality of the concrete. There's soil tests that they may have to do. There's structural steel inspections, and then there's a litany of things in here, so this is a not-to-exceed contract for 29,000, based on the form of proposal that was included for those inspection fees. So it's different than the construction management side, it's different than the testing that's specific to the underground storage tanks and the manganese identified.
Number one, right. Okay, it just, it does seem like there's a lot of overlap. And though I understand that some things are isolated, so the first discovery was an isolated incident, it needed to address that appropriately. I do completely understand that. I think from a cost perspective, though, and please keep in mind, I'm always talking with that hat. It's never personal, it's always business. From a cost perspective, though, I'm just concerned about the capital that's already been expended, and any capital that we have in reserve to meet the demands based on the extent of this project, considering that that particular site, to my knowledge, which I did ask about prior to your, assuming the position, did not have any sewer connections. So there are some other things that are going to come up, so as we are, and I mean, I understand that, you know, some of these things we can't get around, we have to hire who we have to hire, but if we could just do a better job, I guess, maybe at reviewing some of the existing contracts we have and trying to see how much we can squeeze out of those contracts before we engage people who may be offering a duplication of services.
Yeah, we're very conscious about duplication of services, and I can tell you, nobody's squeezing harder than I can, because it's on time and under budget. So Rich can attest to that. We have meetings about the cash flow, the source and use of funds, you know. I've been very animated when it comes to change orders and who's doing what, so there's a lot of professionals that's involved in a project of this scale, and I have no intention, no desire to pay anybody anything other than what we need to do. You know, we're doing more than the bare minimum, but when it comes to these professional services, a little bit outside of my realm, so I'm always looking to get the best, you know.
Bang, kiba?
There you go.
I got you. I would also ask Mayor and Council, this may be an opportune time to review the responsible contracting ordinance that had been presented on several different occasions, considering the number of changers, orders we've had with this particular project, any future change orders, as well as any future construction along the 291 corridor. So we want to make sure that we have something in place to make sure that we're keeping up with the 21st standards that we are working so hard to set for our city and for our community. And that concludes all my questions for today. Thank you. Oh, did you have something for me? Yes.
Yeah, what I will say, and I'll be quite frank with you, Colliers is expensive, and to best put it in terms, Colliers is steak 48. Sometimes we can't afford steak 48, we got to go to Longhorn, and so that's what's happening.
Well, and I understand that. I think we had maybe Texas Roadhouse.
Yeah.
We had a Texas Roadhouse, but I think that the sentiment at that time was that we deserved something better or needed something better, and now that we had slash have something better, I'm just making sure that we get the full compliment. And I'm just not certain that we're actually doing that, considering some of the GIS things that they were supposed to provide for us and others, so, you know, we, I think all of you have the contract. If you don't, we can, you know, most certainly make that available to you, but I'm just really concerned about the amount that we invest. Oh, Colliers Engineering Contract. I'm just concerned about the amount that we're investing in these services with, you know, some taxpayer dollars, but also with the ARPA funds, and making sure that we're getting a return on our investment. That's all.
Thank you.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments or questions? Any presentations? Mayor, do you? Okay, so we're going to go into executive session after this meeting, and the deliberative meeting for today is now closed.